One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a proclamation. I would like the, sorry, Mary Stamey, Marlene Verber, I think I said that completely wrong, Connie Noble, and I'm not sure Krista's here, but Barbara also to come on up for International Women's Day for AAUW. We're not usually this dysfunctional, but, okay, welcome ladies. I too am part of the AAU International Women's Day Committee as well as the organization. So I'm thrilled you're here this evening as we celebrate International Women's Day. So I'm going to read the proclamation and then I'll let you say a few words. So whereas in 1911, International Women's Day was first honored in Austria, Denmark, Germany, and Switzerland, when more than one million women and men attended rallies campaigning for women's rights to work, vote, be trained, hold public office, and for an end to gender discrimination. And whereas in 1977, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a resolution calling on member states to proclaim a day for women's rights and international peace. And following the internet, sorry, United Nations lead, each year, the U.S. President issues a proclamation calling on all citizens to observe March as National Women's History Month, as well as a separate proclamation on International Women's Day, March 8th. And whereas this year, and whereas this year, our country saw the rise of powerful movements that shine the light where women's rights and freedoms will fall short. International Women's Day is a day to celebrate the collective power of women, uphold women's achievements, recognize challenges, focus greater attention on women's rights and gender equality, encourage and mobilize all people to do their part to bring about positive change. Now therefore, I, Yusha Reddy, Mayor of City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Sunday, March 8th, 2020, as International Women's Day. In the City of Manhattan, to each for equal motivating and uniting friends, colleagues, and community to think, act, and accelerate gender equality. Who would like to take the proclamation? Here you go, Marlene, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Here you go. Might I say a few words?
Okay, go ahead.
It's an honor to serve and celebrate International Women's Day. This is our fifth year to do so. Get that out of my face. And we have a panel of speakers for the fourth year from Argentina, China, South Korea, and Zimbabwe. So join us, it's a public meeting on Monday night at the Holiday Inn near the campus. Welcome anybody to come, about seven.
Right, and it's free.
Okay, it's free to the public. So come join us. Thanks.
The next proclamation is for March for Meals, Meals Month. Representatives, you can come on up, I took off the name off of this, sorry about that. Welcome. Brenda, would you like to read the proclamation for us? Thank you.
Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 and established a national nutrition program for Americans 60 years and older. The March for Meals Campaign was established in March 2002 to recognize the historic month, the importance of the Older Americans Act Meals Program that provides meals served in senior centers and meals delivered to homes of elders, and to raise awareness about the escalating problem of hunger among older Americans. The 2020 observance celebrates opportunities to support older Americans Friendship Meals Programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. In 2019, volunteers at the Riley County Senior Service Center delivered 21,400 meals to seniors' homes in Manhattan and served more than 12,000 meals at the Riley County Senior Service Center. The Friendship Meals Program has served our communities memorably for more than 40 years in Kansas and Manhattan. Now therefore, I, Yusha Reddy, Mayor of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim March 2020 as March for Meals Month and urge citizens to honor participants, volunteers, and those who work to make Friendship Meals successful in Manhattan.
Thank you. We know the wonderful work all of you do, and thank you so much. I know it takes hours of your time and passion to make all of this successful. Thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Anne Nielsen and this is Kate DeHaeler, and we're both members of the Riley County Council on Aging. And over 100 Friendship Meals are delivered every day by volunteers to the homes of seniors. And another 25 to 50 meals are served daily at the Riley County Senior Services Center. The volunteers who deliver and help serve these meals not only provide significant or food to a significant risk of people, but they also provide caring concern and attention. So on behalf of the Riley County Council on Aging, the volunteers and the Friendship Meal recipients, we want to thank the Manhattan City Commissioners for your recognition for the March for Meals Month. And if you would like to come on March 23rd through the 27th, there's going to be a week of thanking the volunteers for who deliver all the meals or serve the meals. And if you would like to come and join and deliver a meal with one of the volunteers, we'd love to have you there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for all the work that you do and the organization itself. Thank you. Are there, sorry, are there any public comments this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to Commissioner comments. Okay, go ahead.
I'll just say that MPO had a meeting and things, ridership's up, I think the K-18 ridership is up, and there's more and more riders from Ogden coming into the community. Just wanted to highlight that. And that's at a bus too, I guess I should say.
Okay, thank you. Other Commissioner comments?
I would just like to comment that on Saturday morning, the American, local American Legion held a program with five members of who, veterans who were in the Battle of the Bulge in Europe in 1943, 44 probably. And just, they're in their 90s and they're kind of aging out, and they are a remarkable group, those that are still living, and the stories they tell are just kind of give you goosebumps. And so they've been holding that every year, and I think that this was their last year to have a formal program because they're just getting too old. So they're going to have informal, you know, come as you can kind of things in the future. But, so if you ever get the chance to talk with an aging veteran about their experiences, at least my dad, he said that the military told him not to talk about his experiences, and he never did. So the fact that some of these men are now talking about it and will tell you about their experiences with the Battle of the Bulge, how they had their feet frozen, they had issued them white capes so that they couldn't be seen from the air because of the snow on the ground, that's how cold it was that they were having to survive there. It's really a remarkable experience and one we need to take heed of, so just, it's appreciative.
I just wanted to highlight that Anthony Middle School had their groundbreaking last week, was very well attended, and we can't wait to see it come to full reality and everybody's utilizing it. The next groundbreaking is for the Douglas Recreation Center tomorrow at four o'clock. I urge all of you to attend if you can. This is again, one of those historic moments for the Douglas Center. They've been wanting this for quite a while and we're finally able to do something about it, and it's truly a community recreation center of its own and well utilized as well, I'm sure. And then there's a flood conference on March 21st at the Hilton Garden Inn. It's free to the public, but they have 150 attendees, maximum limit. If you would like to sign on, I, again, I think one of those things you should probably go to, this is the time we start having a two-hour flash flood that happens really quickly, and we are kind of up in arms about residents and what happens, and things happen really quick in the spring and summer season. So if you choose to go to that one, please go ahead and register online. That's it. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Oh, yes.
Commissioner Morse didn't prompt me, but speaking of floods, we do have a couple items on the consent agenda.
Trained them well.
That would draw some attention to item E is simply some additional financing authority for some of the improvements of the stream bank erosion repair along Wildcat Creek south of Fort Riley Boulevard and the Linear Park Trail that has been completed and repaired. And so this is the financing for that. And then item I is recommendation to award a remediation project to repair riprap and other bridge protection measures as part of the Wildcat Creek Bridge at Scenic Drive. And so in this particular case, the engineer's estimate was $169,125. We're recommending, there were two bidders, the low bid was submitted by Ham Inc. of Perry, Kansas in the amount of $187,254.85. Although it does exceed the engineer's estimate, the Director of Public Works has provided you with a written memo as to why we believe that we should still award this lowest bid so we can get the repair work completed.
Thank you, Ron Fear, for doing that. It's important that we draw attention to the work that the city is doing with regard to flooding and the flooding, floods of the past. The most recent flood was Wildcat Creek in 28, Labor Day 2018. I am thankful that we are able to use, to spend this money on Wildcat Creek because we didn't have an event on the Blue River last, earlier this, it was me last year. It's in every one of these floods, we have to keep working it and pay attention and try to grab every amount of grant dollars we can. So I'm really, you know, I think that other state agencies and communities look at Manhattan and are praise the effort we make here, and we're surrounded by rivers, so it's important that we do this work.
Yep, thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, the items on consent agenda are those of routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A Commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the general agenda. Does the Commissioner have any questions or comments about any of the consent agenda items? I think one of your favorites is on there, Win.
Yeah, I just want to comment on item G, and that's something that I've been working on since 2014, so it's been a three-year project. You know, this, the consent agenda just says they were going to change some regulations for the cemetery, and of course, that's something that Parks and Rec manages on top of everything else to include the animal shelter, so, you know, when you talk Parks and Rec, a lot of things. But what I, what I'm happy about is, and the Cemetery Board worked on this for three years, and Sexton worked on it, and what this change in ordinance has in it is the ability to do what is referred to as natural burials or green burials in Sunrise Cemetery. And that, that's a major change, but for, you know, those folks that are environmentalists and are concerned about that, it's, it's something that, that I think was needed in our cemetery system. We added columbariums a couple of years ago, that was part of the push. So now you've got several different options when it comes to, you know, terrible outcomes. But for those that are in the environmental movement, you know, we're, we've added another checkmark on green burials.
Any other questions about the consent agenda or comments? Public comments or questions on the general agenda? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda as we, as distributed.
Second.
Brenda, please call the board.
Mayor Reddy.
Yes.
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol.
Yes.
Commissioner Escher, Estebrock.
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Yes, all right. Moving on to our first general agenda item, consider authorizing negoti, negotiation of agreement with Zaxter Incorporated to access public right-of-way for micro mobility services. And Jared Wassinger, our Assistant City Manager, Assistant to the City Manager, and Adam Greenstein, Zaxter Micro Mobility Director, will be presenting this evening. Hi, Jared.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. As Mayor mentioned, we have Adam Greenstein, he's going to be conferencing in via Zoom to answer any questions related to Zaxter, Link Scooters, and the Green Apple Bikes Partnership. Just to test real quick, Adam, if you want to go ahead and say hello, we'll see if everyone can hear you.
Hi, good, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Oh yeah, loud and clear.
Excellent, well, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all tonight.
Well, I'll get started with my presentation and then afterwards, or if during, you have any questions that I can't answer, I'll be referring to Adam on, on those. Little background on how we got to where we are today, over the last really three years, e-scooters kind of hit cities across the country. The models that a lot of e-scooter companies used were similar to kind of the gig economy, rideshare economy, where individuals could pull up a mobile app, rent a scooter, use it for transportation, be charged via the app through a credit card or debit card linked to the account. Scooter companies took the, the business model of basically dropping scooters all across larger cities across the country, which caused a lot of concerns, problems related to parking, related to use on sidewalks. A lot of states, including the state of Kansas, hadn't actually defined and regulated e-scooters from a traffic standpoint. Over time, that's shifted, cities have adopted local regulations, they've required agreements, pilot programs, contracts with these e-scooter companies to access their right-of-way. Universities have done the same. So cities and universities have really kind of taken control over that, and now e-scooter companies are changing their model, they're approaching cities, governing bodies, universities to do more of a partnership and work with the community to meet their needs, to provide a different mode of transportation. The state of Kansas was one of those states that had not had any traffic regulations on the books related to defining e-scooters and how they were used. So during the 2019 legislative session, they did define e-scooters, and from a traffic perspective on public streets and highways, they defined e-scooters from the traffic regulations that were the same as bicycles. So if you're riding a bicycle on a public street, you have to follow the same traffic regulations as if you're on an e-scooter. The one exception with what Kansas law passed was that they prohibited the use of e-scooters on any federal, state highway or interstate. So within the, within the City of Manhattan, that would include Fort Riley Boulevard, Tuttle Creek Boulevard, Seth Child, and then US Highway 24. So when we adopted the standard traffic ordinance back in October of 2019, we adopted the same regulations as what the state did. So from a traffic perspective, when you're riding an e-scooter on the public streets of Manhattan, you have to follow the same traffic laws as a bicycle, with the exception, as I mentioned, of riding, you can't ride it on a local federal highway or interstate, state highway. We did also adopt some local ordinances that I'll discuss here at that same time in October. And then the City Commission also at that time kind of charged city staff with creating some type of selection process to allow a e-scooter company or micro mobility company to access our public right-of-way. Little overview of our local regs, as I said, the STO mirrors the state law. Ordinance number 7449 was also adopted by the City Commission in October 2019. It addressed sidewalks, public parking lots, garages, and parking e-scooters in the community. From a sidewalks perspective, the same as bicycles here locally, the ordinance prohibited use of micro mobility devices, including e-scooters, on sidewalks in Aggieville and downtown. It prohibited use of e-scooters in public parking lots and parking garages. From a parking standpoint, people are supposed to park via this ordinance, e-scooters within designated bike racks on public property or designated areas by the city in Aggieville or downtown. Outside of Aggieville and downtown, you can either park on a public bicycle rack, or you can park on the curb, much like a vehicle would where parking is allowed today. That was intended so that you wouldn't park an e-scooter in the middle of the sidewalk, which would obstruct pedestrian and ADA traffic. So we also addressed what I've been referring to as micro mobility network companies, and that would be anything from e-scooters, e-bikes, if in the event, you know, the, the community gets talented and sophisticated enough to do the hoverboards and all those things, we are requiring those micro mobility network companies who provide that service so where people can download an app, rent that type of mode of transportation, and then use it in the public, we are requiring them to enter into an agreement with the city to access our public right-of-way that needs to be approved by the City Commission. So when we went through all those processes of defining the regulations of e-scooters and micro mobility devices, staff also authorized, city staff, to work towards some type of RFP selection process. Throughout this whole process, we've been talking with Kansas State University, who also has interest to allow e-scooter services on their campus. We understood the complexity of e-scooters being used on campus and then transferring off-campus into the public. So there was feedback from the Commission during the October meeting that we wanted to work towards some solution of selecting one vendor that was the same vendor, because we understand that these scooters, you know, if we enter into that agreement with an e-scooter company, are going to be going on and off-campus because that's where people are going to be going to and from. There's a lot of complexity, we never really do joint RFPs. Kansas State University has their own procurement processes, city has their own processes. So what we decided on and discussed with the City Commission was Kansas State moving forward with an RFP process and city staff, RCPD, and possibly a member of the City Commission serving on a selection committee with Kansas State as like ex officio members, non-voting members, but able to provide feedback, because in the event that Kansas State awarded an e-scooter contract, it was probably likely that, that e-scooter company was going to come to the city and request the same agreement. So they wanted city, RCPD input during that process, given that was likely the case. So KSA received six proposals, the selection committee narrowed it down to three for interviews that occurred over a few weeks in February, and they selected Zaxter Incorporated, which is a company out of Boston. They are a unique model because Zaxter is actually a fleet and operations management company. They started in 2007, providing a bike share company, but now they have contracts all over the country managing fleets for e-bikes, e-scooter companies because of the complexity and how it is to manage those. They partnered with Link, which is a scooter company also out of Boston, spun out of a group, a company called Super Pedestrian, which came from MIT, and they are, they are the partner with Zaxter that would be providing the scooters and mobile app. So the city, you know, Zaxter has approached the city now that they've been awarded the contract, or they've been awarded the intent of awarding a contract with the university, they have approached the city, and in your packet, there was a letter from them seeking, you know, access to the city's right-of-way. So the city would be entering into an agreement if authorized with this company, Zaxter. They would also though be providing the Link scooters. So from a public perspective, in the event we go through this process, the City Commission authorizes us to negotiate an agreement tonight, we move forward with an agreement with that Zaxter. Zaxter would have in that agreement that they are going to be, you know, in charge of deploying and operating Link scooters. So it's from the public perspective, you're going to see Link scooters everywhere, you're going to download the Link app, you're going to see some Zaxter employees throughout the community helping manage, deploy, rebalance these scooters. But from a public perspective, it'll be Link scooters that you're going to see across the city and the university. Zaxter also had a partnership in this with Green Apple Bikes, which I'll get to from a community engagement and marketing perspective. This is a picture of a Link scooter, as I said, they are, Super Pedestrian is a company that was founded at MIT, and they've created their own scooter in-house, they've designed it, engineered it themselves, which is actually unlike other e-scooter companies. And that was one of the reasons that Kansas State and the city, you know, thought that Link scooter was superior than the other people that we were talking with. The scooter has active safety inspection, so before a ride, during a ride, and after a ride, that scooter is self-inspecting itself to see if there are any issues. Geo fencing capabilities are really great, this was one of the things that the city and Kansas State was really excited about. We talk a lot about geo fencing as it goes to no-ride zones, slow zones, parking zones. Most e-scooters that you'll ride and the ones that we, the other proposals that we saw, the geo fencing is through GPS technology that's actually through your phone. So what happens is you bring out your phone, you rent a scooter, you hop on the scooter, and say they have a geo fence coming up that says no riding in this area. What's happening is your phone is pinging to GPS through a satellite that pings back to your phone, then pings to the scooter, which takes a long time. Link scooters have the GPS built into the actual scooter, so Link, you know, proposes that within less than a second, the geo fencing technology is going to be activated, whereas in other scooters, it could take up to 15 seconds for the scooter to realize that it's in a geo fence, and if you're going 15 miles an hour, you could be out of it by then. So that was one of the very interesting things that this scooter provide, provided. It has in-app rider education too, so these are all things that in the event we negotiate an agreement, we'll be able to work with Zaxter, who will work with Link to, to update the in-app rider education so that individuals can know about our local ordinances.
Jared, when you talk about geo fencing, so you said it's almost just within a few seconds or almost immediate, what does that mean? So does, if we have a decreased speed limit or something of that sort or not supposed to be there, does it just automatically slow them down? Does it stop? What happens?
It doesn't automatically, you know, just jolt it from 15 to eight, you know, it has the technology in it to slowly do that so it doesn't, you know, affect the rider and, you know, have them react quickly. You know, I will actually just, since we're talking about that, I'm going to jump out of the PowerPoint and bring up something that was in your packet, and I didn't have it in the slide, but I want to give you an idea of what it was like. So when, when Zaxter and Link were doing the interview, they brought one of their scooters on site and they wanted us to test the geo fencing technology. So in this map here, we all got to ride it, which was really nice. We were outside of Anderson Hall, and we took this kind of route down by, I believe this is Eisenhower, then to the roundabout, then back up by where McCain is and the World War II Memorial is. So these are geo fencing, geofences that they've put up, and they created slow zones that go, go down to nine miles an hour. So I hopped on the e-scooter at this point, got it up to 15 miles an hour, I hit this slow zone, and instantly the scooter has an audible notification that lets you know that you've hit a geo fence, and then it slowed down to nine miles an hour. And I was gunning it, but it still stayed at nine miles an hour, so it knows you're in that geo fence. And then I wrapped around up here, back towards Anderson Hall. Again, I hit a slow zone, and then what we tested was, okay, as an example, because this was for K-State, K-State isn't going to want people riding around an e-scooter in their World War II memorial dedication. So what we tested was going into the actual memorial, and what it did was it gave another audible notification, and it eventually slowed down and stopped immediately, and we had to walk out, because you're not allowed to ride in there. So the technology was very impressive when we tested it. I also, there was a pothole right here, and I decided to take it, and, you know, this is a pretty sturdy scooter. It's 60 pounds, so it, and it has about 10-inch tires, so it did well over the e-scooter, and I did not fall or anything like that.
And and we don't require helmets, so?
The city does not require helmets. Zaxxer and Link, you know, through their education, they are going to be recommending that. Through a lot of their public education campaigns, they propose providing free helmets at certain events, and in the proposal, they listed a long list of of community and university events that they would like to be present at, to show people how to ride, and things like that. Thank you. I touched on Zaxxer. One of the things that Kansas State and city representatives on the selection committee that really liked about this model was other e-scooter companies use kind of a gig economy as it comes to employing and deploying their scooters. So for example, they may have one local person who's hired and employed by their e-scooter company, and then what they do, kind of like Uber, is you can have up to 40 to 50 residents, students, who are, can download the app, and can go pick up and charge scooters, or move scooters, but it's at their discretion. So if, you know, they have 40 people, and only 10 of them are willing to go move scooters that day, only 10 of them will get moved. Or if a report comes through, it's really up to the person to choose whether they're willing to go move that. Zaxxer uses an approach that they hire a whole crew that'll be locally, W2 employees, with a local director and a warehouse, so that all scooters will be charged overnight at the warehouse, not in people's houses or anything like that. But they'll employ a director and a large group of people who are going to be managing the fleet of Link scooters, which, so deployment at the beginning of the day, they're going to put scooters in spots that they know that there is a need for people throughout the day, you know, that I think in their proposal, they have three shifts, so, you know, that mid-shift, they're going to be rebalancing if there's a cluster that a bunch of people went to this area, but then they need to pick them up and move it elsewhere, charging, inspections, maintenance, all of that. So that was something that, you know, was at ease of the Kansas State and the city, so that we're not, one, relying on, you know, just unemployed individuals to keep these maintained and looking nice, and making sure they're out of the way in the sidewalk. There's going to be, you know, a crew of people who have done that. The university reached out to other universities across the country who are working with Zaxxer, and they've been impressed with their model. So Zaxxer also has an agreement with Green Apple Bikes to start providing operational support for Green Apple Bikes through, you know, while they're out picking up scooters, they're also going to be helping picking up bicycles as well. I believe Green Apple Bikes is still going to maintain their bikes through their facility and their employees, but they are going to help from a rebalancing and deployment effort for Green Apple Bikes. Green Apple Bikes is also going to partner with Zaxxer from a community engagement and education perspective, holding in-person events with Zaxxer employees to not only talk about bike safety and bike education, but e-scooter and e-scooter education, so people can learn about Link and Green Apple Bikes at the same time. And then, of course, Green Apple Bikes has been in the community a while. They have a lot of, you know, local people who know the community and know people, and can get Zaxxer in touch with a lot of individuals. In the proposal, Zaxxer did mention a revenue sharing portion, and they had two different proposals, which are really up for negotiation for the the university and the city, and that was, one, they would provide 25 cents per ride, and that would be a point of origin. So if you check out the e-scooter on the university, they would propose paying the university. If you check out the e-scooter on city public right-of-way, the city would get that 25 cents. And then they also proposed an annual license fee of $180 per scooter. Right now, they're proposing about 250 scooters on campus and 250 in the community, so if you had all 250 out every day of the year, that'd be about $45,000. We've had informal discussions with university officials that it may be best that we divert this revenue to the city/university fund, because of the complications with point of origin and use and things like that. So that that could be up for debate, and those are things that we can discuss. If we're authorized to negotiate that contract, we can work with the university, who is going to have a separate contract with Zaxxer, to talk about those, so that we're on the same page. So the recommendation tonight is really to authorize city administration to begin negotiations with Zaxxer for that micro mobility agreement. From a timeline perspective, we, you know, it's possible we could be back at maybe that mid-April meeting to with that agreement, and then Zaxxer has told us that they're looking for about a 45-day implementation plan. I know K-State wants to have these launched pretty quickly. They like e-scooters to be deployed on campus, I believe, mid-April. I know Linda Cook's here, so I can let her talk about that. But the idea was they wanted a couple of weeks while students were around, and then summer will kind of slow down, but it'll still give people in the community an opportunity to use these, and then the fall ramp back up, and students will be back. So K-State and us have been talking about the two agreements that we're doing, doing possibly like a six-month pilot agreement, making the companies come back at a three-month review period, but of course, having that constant communication with them throughout that deployment, before and leading up to it. You know, it'll take time to talk with downtown and Aggieville to see where they would like these to be ridden, or where they would like these to be parked, you know, setting up those geo-fences, and all of those things. So there's some time that goes into it, and we'll work on that. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I have Adam here, who can answer any technical questions that I can't. We also have his presentation that he provided, Kansas State, that was in your packet, if there's a specific thing that you have a question about that he would like to cover.
Thank you, Jared. Questions for Jared?
One of the things that I was interested in when we first started, from the time we started talking about this, and that's the opportunity to have a an area where you can, where a scooter can't go, and I was thinking about Triangle Park, so it's not, doesn't become just a dumping ground. But, you know, there was talk, too, about Aggieville and downtown on their sidewalks. But I noticed the map you have in here, in our packet, and it looks like the university, at least, has contoured the geo-fencing to keep them on the sidewalk, so that they really aren't in the interior so much. Is that how I should interpret that map you included?
Was it the map that I just showed?
Yeah.
In the other presentation?
No, it was another one. It has...
So to answer that, you know, our local ordinance allows it on sidewalks and in the streets, except for Aggieville and downtown, so...
So Triangle Park is Aggieville?
So this example is a good one, so, you know, Link has the capabilities to create geo-fences like this one, so you could put, you know, red, no-riding, no-parking zones in Triangle Park. If that's where, if we don't want these dumped in Triangle Park, you can create this red geo-fence right here, like, that is on this map, and it will create it, so that it can't ride in there, and also, you could do it so that you can't park in there. And if you do leave it there, you could, you know, get a fine, or you could even be suspended as a rider, if you're a habitual violator of that. So those capabilities are there.
Yeah, it's the one before that, the slide before that one. Go backward. There you go. So they've shaded out this lower-speed zone, so they have the, you have the opportunity to contour, but it looks to me like from the heavy purple, that those are the routes that the scooters can be ridden on.
So this was a, this was just a map and a proposal that Zaxxer provided K-State to give them an idea of the capabilities that they can do. And and they're really going to start, once they enter into that contract, start planning and really defining those areas. So they were, this was an example of them saying that anything on campus, you know, kind of throughout the heart of campus, we can make it so that it's eight miles an hour only, whereas if you're riding on these purple roadways throughout campus, we can keep it so that it can go up to 15 miles an hour. That was just an, this map was really just an explanation from them.
But it's an example of...
The thoughtful planning that they can do.
Example of how you have some control, then.
Yep.
Okay. But we haven't seen yet the geo-fencing with regard to restricted areas.
No, so that would be something that we would negotiate and plan with them upon that contract. It can get as sophisticated as Fake Patty's Day is coming up, for example. You could create a geo-fence for the day of Fake Patty's Day, so that no e-scooters could ride on that day. If you give them two days' notice to do that, you can create it so that no e-scooters can even be ridden in the whole Aggieville district that day, because of how dense the population is. So you can work with...
Can really be specific.
You know, downtown, Aggieville, and some of those areas. If there's a parade going on, we can notify them that, you know, create a geo-fence during this time period, oh, on this day. So it can even get down to the day and time.
So I'm a little curious about the liability. I assume that the fine print, when you download your app and you authorize it, and you put your credit card in there, you're going to click something that says, "I understand that the Zaxxer and everybody else is not responsible if I crash this thing and break a leg." Is that accurate?
So I'll defer to Adam on the relationship between Zaxxer or Link and the individual riding it. Within the contract that we develop, we're going to create our own indemnification provisions that, you know, don't have the city liable. Adam, you want to touch on that?
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. So that's correct, and just as you would in, you know, for example, writing an Uber app, when you sign up for an account, you'd be signing the, and checking off the terms and conditions, and we're happy to provide the language for the rider terms and conditions that would be included in the Link app. And then, in addition, we, through the agreements that Zaxxer holds with the university, and Zaxxer holds separately with the city, we're required to hold, you know, certain insurance levels, add the university and the city as additionally insured under our policies, and also, there's pretty robust indemnification provisions in each agreement as well. And so we would, we're adopting here the indemnification provisions that were suggested by KSU in the RFP, and we're happy to extend that same indemnification language, and frankly, you know, basically, all of the language of that KSU agreement to the Manhattan-Zaxxer agreement as well.
The only limit on who can ride or rent one of these would be, you've got to have a credit card, debit card, something like that. There's no way to control, obviously, a nine-year-old could ride one of these, 75, 80-year-old person could ride one of these. There's, as long as they've got the ability to pay and have a card that they can put on file through their app, it's a, it's open to anybody and everybody to rent one of these, correct?
So I will say that there are no age restrictions from our local ordinance. So today, you know, you could buy an e-scooter from Walmart, and there isn't a 16- or 18-year-old age restriction. The companies that we heard proposals from, a lot of them have company policies that you have to be 18 years or older. Adam, I can't recall if you guys had that policy.
We do, and so it's part of the terms and conditions that you're agreeing that you are 18 and 18 years or older. Another check, just a technical confirmation on that, is that one of the requirements in the signup process, in addition to entering the credit card or debit card information, is actually scanning a picture of a government-issued ID. So that tends to deter a lot of the underage usage. You know, honestly, what we do see in some communities is, you know, irresponsible parents, you know, creating an account, and and then basically giving the car, the keys to the car, you know, to their kids, and we see some underage riding that happens that way. Obviously, not responsible to do that, and, but we also, that's part of the reason why we invest so much in rider education and local partnerships with organizations like Green Apple Bikes, who can really help us educate the public on what's proper and safe riding behavior, you know, outside the confines of a of a mobile application, when you're talking to people one-on-one. And of course, we also have our staff in the community on a daily basis, you know, between, you know, 15 and 25 people that are out and about, and wearing Zaxxer vests, and educating people as to proper riding behavior, and can approach, you know, underage riders in that environment as well.
Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, but you also, I believe, mentioned in your proposal that, say, if a person doesn't have a government-issued ID, there's ways to contact Zaxxer directly so that you can gain access. Another thing that is mentioned is some people don't have debit or credit cards, so you can go to a local, you know, convenience store or something like that, and through cash, purchase a Visa card that can link to the account. So I think those capabilities are there.
That's correct, Jared. So we would, we can serve people without IDs and without credit cards or debit cards, it's just through a special process where, in the, in the ID issue, you, yeah, you would contest us directly, and we could set up the account on your behalf.
And if somebody doesn't have any money, then they'll just have to ride the Green Apple Bike.
Yeah.
Apparently.
Yeah.
That'll work. Okay.
So I have a couple of questions as well. You talked about a warehouse for charging. Where is this warehouse? Or what are you talking about?
I believe Zaxxer is working on securing a warehouse that they can manage their fleet out of, so I would defer to Adam on that.
Sure. Yep. So as part of our launch, our pre-launch process, basically, actually, the first thing that we do is secure a local warehouse that will serve as the local headquarters for our operations. It's a sizable, the exact size and square footage of the warehouse depends on the actual fleet size that we're managing, because what we do, unlike some other providers, is that we pick up every scooter in the fleet every evening, we bring it back to our warehouse, we charge the scooters there overnight, and then in the morning, the morning shift inspects them for redeploy, before they redeploy them, and then they redeploy them to defined locations on the university and the city. So that warehouse and its configuration, electrical build-out, et cetera, is all on us, and it's how we deliver really effective operations for our community.
Okay, well, that's good to know, because I was wondering how they were going to utilize the energy needed to charge all of them in the dorms or in their homes, or how they were going to do it.
We've learned a whole lot about electrical build-outs over the past few years, and have some some local and expert electricians on our staff, so that we build out each warehouse and really configure it to be customized for scooter operations.
Great. Well, that's good to hear. It looks like there is age requirements, and students being, you know, trying to test things out, there's a lot of things that have potential to go wrong. For example, do you have to have your cell phone on you to ride this?
You would need it to, to check out the scooter, and then to ride it, and then you would also need it to end the ride. So, yeah, you would need that.
Okay. Well, the only reason I ask is that students sometimes tend to share things, so they may use somebody else's, a friend is there, hey, you can ride this, here's my ID, let's check you on and go on. So I wasn't sure how that would all work together on those things. So it says 25 cents per ride. What does per ride mean? So is it when somebody gets on and gets off, that's a ride?
Yep. So the proposed price proposal from Zaxxer was a dollar to unlock, and then 15 cents per minute, I believe. Was it 15? Was it 15, Adam?
That's correct.
Yep, so that, you know, once you check it out, wherever you ride it, whether it's a minute, 30 minutes, that's one ride.
So a dollar just to take one, and then 15 cents per minute after that?
Yep.
Now, we have winter here. So do they use them in the wintertime? I mean, it's not as winter now, I guess. It's not snowing all the time here right now. But I was wondering if they still, if, let's say, we have a snowstorm or an ice storm or something, are these kept in the warehouse at that time, or how does that work?
That was a question that we asked specifically. And fortunately, when we were doing the interview, the program director for Zaxter, because they're in Wichita, was there present. And they have a standard protocol that they go about of when to deploy and not deploy scooters. And of course, since we have the agreement, we can, you know, notify them if there's inclement weather. They do want to keep them out in the winter because people-
Still ride them.
-rely on this as a mode of transportation. There may not be as many users, but they do that calculation on a consistent basis to ensure that there's enough out there for individuals to serve the community.
Okay, I think most of the questions have been answered even by the commissioners asking them as well. So what I'm seeing is 250 scooters, is that what we're signing up for at the beginning?
That's open to negotiation, but that was what Zaxter recommended.
And I would just, just one point of clarification as well, if I may. The, what we'd envision as the right size for, between the university and the city, would be a maximum of 500. But we would typically see that as, we would only be operating at that full fleet level during the peak times, like when, you know, the fall and spring, when, you know, students are back in action. Whereas in, you know, winter months and perhaps even over the summer, we'd be operating at a lower volume of total fleet between the university and the city.
And how do we do the geo fencing? Because we just, on our consent agenda, we had the trails, approved trails for micro-mobility. So do we, are we reducing the speed on those trails? How are we gauging that?
So the ordinance that you all passed on the consent agenda allows those uses on trails and in city parks. I don't believe there was a provision in there on a speed limit. There is a speed limit on sidewalks. So we have a provision on public sidewalks, and I don't know if it was extended to public trails. But the speed enforcement from our regulation is that you have to yield to pedestrian traffic if you're passing them. And you also cannot exceed 15 miles an hour. So regardless, you know, we'll probably work with Link to limit that to 15 miles an hour. If there is a need or a concern of a specific trail, for example, that we think it should be a low-speed zone, that's something that we can discuss with them, city staff, and make that arrangement. So we'll have a direct contact with the program director who's locally here. So like we were saying, if there's an event coming up, or, hey, you know, we started out with this geo fence, but we don't think it's working well, can we change it to this? Or can we not allow it completely? Those are things that, you know, we can work with them on.
One question, when you were testing these scooters, I guess they have lights on them?
They do have headlights and rear lights that are-
How effective were those? I mean, I can't really tell from the pictures. Did you get a chance to-
We did it during the day. There was a picture in your slide.
Right.
And I'll show that real quick, if I can find it. But this was an example of the headlights of Link scooters versus a competitor. And they were very bright, so they would work at night. They have it so that you can see far out in front of you, but you can also see right in front of you, which is a good help for night riders.
Because they said they were picking these up in the evening. Is there some timeframe, you know, when they pick these up? I mean, obviously, they're not going to do it right at dark, but is, what do they do, get them at midnight, or?
That can be negotiated, but I do know that Zaxter has a preference, and Adam, you can jump in on that operation perspective.
Sure, thanks, Jared. Basically, you know, our goal is to just have the program available for when people will actually want to use it. You know, there's no point of putting, you know, scooters out at 2:00 AM and it's just probably a recipe for trouble. So what we were, what we were thinking is that the program would kind of start on a daily basis and be available for usage at 7:00 AM. And by 7:00 AM, we would have all of the scooters out and deployed at these defined locations that we'll work with you on for the city. And then the, our proposal is to end operations at 10:00 PM. And that gives, you know, students that are taking evening classes and maybe the late shift, you know, to be able to utilize the program when they get out to go home. But then thereafter, kind of avoid any late-night riding concerns. So 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM is what we're initially thinking. But, you know, working through that with the university and happy to chat through that with the city as well, if you wanted to move forward.
I like, that's a good answer, because I was a little bit concerned about, you know, late night driving around on scooters in Aggieville at 2:00 AM when the bars close. And so that avoids that entirely, so.
Yeah, so I have another question. So if you're charging them overnight, let's say, how long does that charge last? Because I'm assuming when they put them into the bike racks, they're not charging them. They're just putting them, right? Those are bike racks that are just for standing bikes?
These scooters have a freestanding kickstand on them, so when you're done with an e-scooter, you're not pulling it up and charging it to an actual platform. You're just putting it up against a rack, or putting it on the curb, or putting it in a parking zone.
So how does, how long does that battery last?
I'll let Adam discuss that, because I'm not sure.
So the battery and super pedestrian is actually designed, the battery in-house with all their MIT engineers. And it's basically the most powerful of any battery. Basically, it lasts probably around, it depends on the duration of each ride, but on average, probably around 10 rides. And we, you know, we don't expect there to be more than 10 rides per day on a single scooter. But in the event that there is, our operations team is actually notified when the battery level reaches 20% or lower. And we will be promptly picking up any scooter that has low battery to avoid having just a dead scooter out on the streets. In any event, we are picking up every single scooter every night and bringing it back to the warehouse regardless of its charge level.
My concern was, people don't usually know, like, how many rides it's been on before. So if they jump on one and it's going and then it stops, is there some kind of a mechanism that says how much it's charged? Like a phone has, like, it's at 60% or 10%? So a person knows?
Absolutely, yes, there is. So the, every scooter will show the charge level, so when you check it out, you can see the charge level. And actually, to avoid that terrible experience of being on a scooter and having it die on you, we don't, we make any scooter that has 20% battery or less actually unavailable to rent. And so that, therefore, you know, if it has 25% battery left, which is, you know, the lowest that it could be to be available to rent, you know, it's very unlikely that you're going to ride that for a few hours and have it die on you.
Okay, that's good. Other questions?
Make a couple of comments. I was a little bit concerned about e-scooters at first because of all the horror stories I read, but it sounds like this process of picking them up every night eliminates one of them. Where cities had e-scooters thrown all over the place, and these are being tracked. And I think that was the big, big negative that I saw, that, you know, you just had them piled up in places, like Linda mentioned, you know, worried about them winding up in Triangle Park. But with this system, it wouldn't happen. If somebody discarded one there, for whatever reason, it would be retrieved at least within a day. And so I think that's pretty good. The geo fencing looks to be excellent also, but of course, we'd need to tweak exactly how we want to do it and get, you know, DMI and Aggieville Business District, Parks and Rec, and everybody to give input. But it sounds like you can pretty much customize it to do whatever you want to do. So I think, you know, I'm impressed with that. And I like the idea here of putting this money in the city/university fund, because that revenue stream got put into North Campus Corridor to a large extent. And this would be a nice way of replenishing that. And I think this being a joint sort of deal between the university and us, that'd be a fine way to put the revenue in there because the way that fund is set up, it benefits both the city and the university. So I'm all for that. And then, you know, figure out which one of these two options, you know, works the best. I mean, I would think, you know, the flat rate per scooter would be easier to manage than 25 cents a ride as far as the administration of it. But, you know, the staff can figure out which one they think is most lucrative.
I will mention, I don't know if you caught it, in Zaxter's proposal that was in your packet, but through their contracts, they say that they kind of give a promise of two hours. So anytime someone submits a formal complaint, or if, say, I get an email that says there's a scooter out in front of my business and I forward that along to the local director, they provide a promise of a two-hour window to pick those up. So there's abilities on the scooter. So if you, kind of like Green Apple Bikes, you can text something or call them. Or if it's a city request of, hey, you know, yeah, these got somewhere and I forward that along, they submit a two-hour request, that they'll get that complete. Maximum, two-hour maximum.
Other comments for Jared? Yeah, I think this, I think it's great that you worked with the Kansas State University and the city worked on this together, so we don't have to do two types of RFPs or looking at consultants. I'm glad also that it's going to be a six-month pilot program with one vendor to see how it works out instead of having multiple vendors and see how that goes. But I do have another question. You said, you know, you can purchase one of these at Walmart and they go about their business. I don't know if they're at the same level as this, as far as quality. They have to follow the same rules we have. But do we control geo fencing on those also? There's no geo fencing, they can just go any speed they want? Okay. So that's more of a concern for me than what we can control. Because, and even in those instances, probably there's no age either, so anybody can ride them. And children, we see, you know, when we have the safe routes to school, I was imagining walking and biking and such, but you can do e-scooters. We were talking about that on the radio this morning, so even for high school students or whomever it might be. So that's probably more where we need to take more precautions and education. Although here, it sounds like it'll be taken care of. And I'm glad they also partnered up with Green Apple Bikes. Green Apple Bikes has been here for several years and they have so many partnerships and our community is so engaged with them, and they have a strong presence in our community. So that bodes well for them as well. City/university funds is the right place for the money to go. I too am in favor of the $45,000 instead of doing the 25 cents per mile or per ride, whatever it might be. Main thing is safety, and even though this is a trend, to see how well we can utilize it to give people many options to be mobile in our community. And we'll see how it works, and hopefully, it does work in the best interest of the community. And many communities have tried it, and we've seen it where it just failed or there were accidents and head injuries. Maybe we need to look at a helmet ordinance or some kind of a regulation on that. But I think for what we have right now, it looks like a pretty good process and a pretty good program. And I'm sure Kansas State University has vetted it out as well. Linda, did you want to say anything to the program?
Yeah, I would just like to reiterate, the university really appreciates working with the city on this initiative. It's been one that we've thought out very carefully for probably about two years now. But this cooperation with the city in providing this type of transportation, which is really aimed at helping getting people to that last mile in areas where parking maybe not be available with vehicles, but, and students. And we have students and faculty that are very interested in this program. And we fully endorse moving forward with Zaxter. We really appreciated the RFPs, the proposals that we received, and had opportunity to talk with several very good companies that have a lot of experience in this. And a couple of things, I won't reiterate everything that Jared said, because he covered it all very well, but a couple of things that really impressed us with Zaxter was, first of all, that scooter and the technology in the scooter. It's a very substantial scooter, has dual kickstands, which helps alleviate some of the problems that tipped-over scooters in walkways, blocking ADA areas, has been a concern in a lot of communities in the way they've designed these scooters. They stand up better, and with the duals kickstands, there's less chance for that. The geo fencing is really, really vital and important to us because that's what allows us to narrow a field of transportation where it can be ridden on the campus. And we have, the path we'll be using is our bike paths. They are allowed on some sidewalks on campus, some they're not. And this geo fencing with Zaxter was the tightest geo fencing of all of the companies that we interviewed. And that capability to be able to control speeds in different areas and the way they designed the scooter just was miles ahead of the other competition. And also, the fleet management. For us to have somebody on the ground here in Manhattan that we can talk to on a daily basis is very important to us. We like the idea that it's the W-2 employees, you don't have people charging these scooters in their homes and trying to make a business off of that, but taking them into a warehouse and managing that fleet. And the response time, because we did check up on the references, I made personal calls to references on all of the vendors that provided proposals. The response time with Zaxter was rated very high by the references that we contacted. And that's one of the things that our parking director wants to be able to know. If there is a scooter in the wrong place, I want to know somebody's going to take care of it right away. Because I don't have time to run around and pick it up. And we not only heard that assurance from Zaxter, but from the cities and the college campuses where they are today. And again, the, you know, the opportunity here is to provide that safe transportation for people. And I think one of the things we talked about too is the fact that a lot of the communities that I, and universities that I talked to, said the response rate far exceeded their expectations. And in Tennessee and also in Minnesota, they thought, well, maybe we'll get by with 200, 250 scooters. They got up to nearly 900 scooters in Minneapolis. And they use it, there's like two months, they're so in Minnesota where it's not too good to ride scooters in the snow. But they said the receptiveness in people using the scooters was beyond their expectation, so. And again, the revenue that we get, and that's not the main reason for us doing this, is to get the revenue. But the revenue estimates, you know, if you do the per rides and you get a scooter ridden two or three, or five, six, seven times a day, some of the communities were estimating their revenue has been over $70,000 a year on a similar scale that the Zaxter is using, so. Any other questions that you have for me?
I don't know, it sounds like maybe we should do the 25 cent for a ride one.
Wasn't the proposal both the flat fee plus the 25 cent, right?
I think it was one or the other.
Either or.
It wasn't either or.
It was.
Never mind.
Do you want to change that, Adam?
To both?
Either or. Whatever it does for you guys.
He was paying attention.
But if it does, I mean, we have that opportunity after the six-month trial to see how we want to move forward with it. So that information's very good, thank you, Linda. And I know when you have game days and such, you'll probably monitor that geo fencing much closer.
And there are, with the geo fencing and working with Zaxter, we'll say probably we don't want them around Bill Snyder Stadium. There'll be a point where they can ride up to and have the parking place. And that's another thing, we have identified our bike racks where we will have the scooters parked on campus. But that we can control over certain hours, maybe we don't want them up there. So that's that ability to work with Zaxter in pinpointing the time and different days throughout the year or the month that we maybe don't want scooters in different areas, so. Game day, and athletics is definitely a part of this because they don't want the scooters in the parking lot during tailgating. That's not an area for e-scooters to be riding around, so. Those types of things we'll be able to watch out for.
Yeah, no, that's really a lot of good information. Yeah, no, that's really a lot of good information. And I know it took us a long time to get here, we've been talking about this for almost two or three years now. And, but I'm glad we waited. I'm glad we just didn't jump on board like everybody else did, that we had them vet it for us first. And I think this wasn't even on our radar. We were talking about Lyman Bird at the time. So it's good that we waited and had a thoughtful process. I really do appreciate the partnership with Kansas State University. Are there other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
I wanted to make one comment about helmets, because, and I was concerned about that, but I can see that the business model's not going to make it so they could put a helmet with each one, because I don't think I want to wear a helmet somebody else was wearing, because there's some sanitary issues there. But, you know, if you look at the laws, you know, in Kansas, you ride a motorcycle without a helmet. And I wouldn't want to see the city try to force it on these scooters, because then we would have to make it also apply to anybody on a bicycle. And then that's an RCPD issue, whatever. So I think, you know, we can't mandate people wearing helmets, but we should educate and encourage, you know, most people on bicycles are wearing them now without an ordinance forcing them to. And I think that'll work. And I could see in some of that, I guess, you're having education, things, giving away helmets. So I think some people will, you know, bring their own helmet and wear it. But I don't think we should pull somebody over and give them a ticket for riding an e-scooter without a helmet, because then we'd have to do that to bicyclists too. So I wouldn't want to go there. We'll see what happens. If there, you know, if there's a spike in accidents, then we may have to revisit it in six months.
Like what I heard, is there any public comments?
I would just say that, you know, this is something we have talked about with our board. And even though we hadn't come to a complete conclusion because we hadn't seen the presentation, but this kind of answers all of our concerns. Our concerns are, just like what Gina would have said downtown, we've got to keep them off the sidewalks, but if we can geofence that, that's perfect. Then our other concern is where they can be parked. And if we can work with that, and, you know, I have no objections with the timing, at 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, you know, so all that works out well for us. With all the construction and things that we're getting ready to have in Aggieville, we're getting ready to lose more parking before we ever gain parking. Any way to have people have a better ability to get in, we're all in favor of that. So this sounds like a great thing for us, as long as we have some input as we move along about how all that works.
Sounds good. Thanks a lot, Dennis.
Yeah, thanks.
Other public comment? Okay, seeing none, back to the commission. Do we have a motion?
Mayor, I move that we authorize city administration to negotiate an agreement with Zaxter Inc. of Boston, Massachusetts for the operation as a micro-mobility network company on city streets, sidewalks, and rights of way.
Second.
I would like to speak now that we have a motion and a second. Roberts rules, and after public comment. And basically, I would just agree that geofencing is critical to satisfying our various publics and not having complaints. I actually like the flat rate, because I think it's less, it would cost less to administer than per ride. But I don't know if you have any insight into what is the...
Zaxter would administer that.
The best return, I know, but I don't care.
Yeah, and one thing I will mention is that through these agreements, that they allow data sharing, so that we can see where these are being ridden. They can start, they can provide monthly reports, weekly reports, whatever, kind of we negotiate with them, so that we can see ridership and things like that.
I appreciate the partnership with Kansas State University. I think that is critical. And I'm delighted that Green Apple Bikes is involved, and there's a relationship there, a mutual, I think a mutual kind of support. I do have one quick question, and that is, are we talking about 250 scooters in the community and 250 on the campus? Yeah, that's what I thought I read. Okay. And I just wanted to clarify that. So I know that there are 500 going to be in the community. I think it's a good partnership. And I'm anxious to see the map with the geofencing when you get ready.
I was going to say, I'm excited that they're coming. I already downloaded the app. I'm hoping I can use it in Washington DC this weekend if they allow that around, so I can save myself from walking six miles a day. And so I'm hoping, and the nice thing about not being the first company in business is you can figure out what the other companies were doing wrong, improve it, make a better product. And this sounds like a much better project. And I rode around Santa Monica a couple of years ago because the bikes were underpowered with small wheels, and they were just laying on the ground in front of the hotel, terribly unsupervised and uncared for. And so this is a much better operation.
We only wish they were in purple, but I guess they're not. Looks like they're in green. With that, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Morse.
Yes.
Commissioner Hattasol.
Yes.
Commissioner Esterbrook.
Yes.
Mayor Ready.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thanks, Adam.
Jared.
Thank you all.
Jared, thank you for shepherding this. Took us a while to get here. Our next discussion is on the Unified Development Ordinance overview and review of Articles 1, 2, and 3. And Chad Bunter, our Assistant Director of Community Development, will be presenting this evening. Welcome, Chad.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Evening Commissioners. Let me pull a thing up, our technical difficulties earlier. Shut this down, apologize. While I'm getting this going, we are super excited to be here tonight discussing this topic. The folks in community development, other departments within City Hall, and our consultant team have been working extremely hard to get us to this point. We have a final draft under review now, and then we're bringing it to you. I would be lying to say that it is completely perfect, but we're real close, and we have one last round of reviews and edits, as well as community conversations. So sorry, let me get this open. So as you know, we've been working on the Unified Development Ordinance for some time. This will be cool. And part of the rollout is our community education. So not only with the Ordinance Advisory Committee, made up of stakeholders and citizens, the Planning Board, and you all, but we want to present this information to the community. So one way we'll be doing that is through videos, online videos. This is the first of several that my staff has created, Eric and I's staff has created. Ben Schmeele and Samantha Esterbrook have put this together and have done a fabulous job. So hopefully this isn't too loud, but this gives you an introduction to the project.
There is so much in Manhattan. It's a city with good industry and good schools. It's a lively town with enough amusement to help us forget the cares of the day. We live in a progressive, ever-growing town. We like to live here, for this is our town. Manhattan, Kansas, USA.
A lot has changed in Manhattan since then. Today, Manhattan continues to be one of the most admired towns in the Midwest, with a high quality of life, a lively economy, a top-tier university, charming neighborhoods, and commercial districts with character. The population has nearly tripled, and the city has more than doubled in size. We continue to develop, revitalize, and enhance our city. But behind all of this development are policies called zoning and subdivision regulations. These policies are the DNA of our city's development and determine where things can be built, how they function, and what they look like. Manhattan has had zoning codes since 1926. And while it's been updated numerous times, the year 1969 marks when our current model of regulations were adopted, with the last major update in 1996. A lot has changed since then in the realm of city planning and the goals of our community: coordinated and efficient growth, resiliency in preserving natural resources, multimodal transportation, healthy, livable neighborhoods offering a variety of lifestyle options, quality of life and sense of place standards, and diverse economic development. A lot has changed around the world of Manhattan, too. New building techniques, housing types, lifestyle choices, transportation options, and economic trends have changed greatly just in the last few decades. These changes in many ways have rendered our current code clunky, difficult to adapt, and less and less relevant. So, for the past couple of years, the city of Manhattan has been in the process of updating and adapting its zoning and subdivision codes through what's known as the Unified Development Ordinance. The goal of this process is to align the code with the community vision for land use and development adopted in the comprehensive plan, while creating a modern code that meets the needs of a thriving city. Utilizing advances in data analysis, computer mapping, modeling, and remote imaging have provided the tools necessary to better assess development patterns and trends. This allows us to make a data-driven code that's better tailored to our existing conditions, allowing us to see where we've been, where we're going, and the changes necessary to get there. The new code will be hosted online in a more visual and user-friendly format, allowing for ease of access and understanding for all levels of users. We will be going through more substantial components of the new code in future videos, which will cover topics like districts and overlays, design standards, and access and connectivity. We expect to roll out new videos every few weeks leading up to the adoption of the Unified Development Ordinance. These topics will also be discussed extensively at future public meetings with the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board and the Manhattan City Commission prior to adoption, which is expected to happen by fall of 2020. Stay tuned.
So I want to thank my staff again for putting that together. They're pretty amazing. And as we go through these different articles of the regulation of the development code, their expertise will shine through, I'm sure. As we said, as the video said, we will discuss article by article with you all, the Planning Board, and the Ordinance Advisory Committee, with the hopes that we will get through them, address any major issues, pull together any minor issues, clean it all up, and later this year be able to adopt it. So the first, first three articles of what we'll cover tonight, obviously, you all have a lot to read every week, so we'll work with you to figure out the best process to make sure that your concerns are addressed or heard, as well as the other groups. So I'll dive into this. The, you've been given the full draft, I do believe, in a PDF form. It's certainly one way you can review these regulations. Truthfully, they, the regulations were built to be used and viewed online with our consultant's proprietary website, InCodePlus. So this website has hyperlinks to cross-references, definitions of planning terms pop up there on the page. So it'll be a lot easier to view this. This is a screenshot of the site. A lot of these tools on the top side of the page will become functional once we get closer to adoption. They're not now because they're time-consuming to put together, and if we change some things, then it kind of blows up that whole process. But the idea here is, beyond looking at just reading through the code, because really only a few people in this world read cover-to-cover zoning regulations, you can go to this website and search for land uses. Say, I want to open a coffee shop. And this website will produce what zoning districts those can be. You can enter in, I want to have a coffee shop X square feet, and it'll produce the parking requirements, the setbacks, those kind of things. So extremely user-friendly to get us to the information for development. Uh, let's see, whoops, didn't mean to click that, apologize. Here we go. There are 12 different articles and a couple of appendix. The ideas, the last two appendix are Public Works Design Criteria and Specifications. So the idea is they will be there in the document in one form or fashion, so you can easily get to those, how to build a driveway specifications, or sewer pipes, those kind of things. So walking through these articles, the first one is the Establishment Article. Not a whole lot of pertinent regulations there, but it establishes this whole development code. It also lays out the hierarchy that this code is organized in. So Articles are the largest group. Again, this will be housed in Chapter 26 of the city's Code of Ordinance. And then it works its way down to the sub-paragraph form. So when we present topics to you, such as a variation of the subdivision regulations, Section 26, 5A, dash whatever, then you can find that quick and easy. Okay, Article 2, we get a little bit more information here with the district conversions. As you can see here, the old, or our current set of regulations is on the left-hand side of the screen, and then the new is on the right. We are combining a number of residential regulations, primarily the single-family. These three single-family districts, they only varied, vary so slightly in terms of how large a lot had to be, and to some degree, setbacks. So they were a lot of complexity, a lot of set of regulations for not a whole lot of benefit to the community, just added levels. And so we've condensed them into one single-family residential district for low density. Then we have our residential, low-density attached, and so on all the way down the line. I don't need to read this chart to you, but this is what the residential set of regulations would look like in terms of districts. Commercial-wise, we don't do a whole lot of combining of districts, just a few exceptions, although these numbers, or these districts align better with our comprehensive plan categories. So we actually have a neighborhood commercial comprehensive plan, land use category, and so they align very well with them. And then our industrial here. We have some special districts. Again, our university and college, so what, Kansas State University, the Manhattan Area Technical College, and Job Corps is on that. We're creating a new district called the Public Institutional District. This would be for city or county zone, or parcels, properties. So think of schools or parks. We haven't quite figured out how to implement this yet, but, you know, those unique public uses that don't necessarily fit within a single-family district. A school, it's vital to be in a single family, or in a residential district, but it has much different parking needs and setbacks and those kind of things than a home does. So we're proposing, the consultant has proposed this PI district. And then we will always have Plan New Development, we're calling them PUD, or Planned Development Floating Zones. You have heard, I have mentioned that PUDs are very time-consuming, it's a two-step process. It takes a lot of money of consultants and consultants' times to get you through a PUD process. So the idea behind these zoning regulations as we go through all the articles is less emphasis in relying on Planned Development Districts and more regulations in place in writing that get us to what we were trying to accomplish with those Plan New Development Districts today. But they're just spelled out in the zoning regulations so that a developer, a builder, can walk in, say, this is what I want to build, this is the regulations, and go build it, instead of a multi-step, thousands of dollars of carrying cost and consultant cost to get us to the same end. So this is our current zoning regulation, zoning... So this is our current zoning regula, zoning map. It's very busy, but as it fades away, you can see that we have one homogeneous, or one single-family residential through this area, and then a lot of the overlays and the multifamily districts really remain the same in terms of the location. The, the legend to the zoning map there, some things to point out. For the Plan Developments, as I said, we've had a number of them. We will designate them with this blue outline, but then give them an indicator of what they are. So you'll be able to see, that is a commercial plan development versus a residential plan development, and so on. The development types, this is something proposed, so we will always have the standard development type, what you see downtown or in other areas of the community. But we've proposed three other types. The clustering development type would really be an ideal situation on the west side of town, where you would take advantage of the ridge lines to build your homes, but then your slopes, your ravines, those kind of things. Ideally, you could parse those out and dedicate them to the HOA, or the city, if the city would like to take it over as parkland, or even a conservation organization like the Audubon Society, or the Nature Conservancy could control these. And as a trade-off, so to speak, of preserving the slopes or the wooded areas, the developer would be able to get more densities, that they would have a minimum, a smaller minimum lot size than what a standard development would be. So they would trade off preserving some of those more environmentally sensitive areas for being able to have, have more sellable lots. The master plan, so you'd take a large, ideally, or in theory, take a large parcel, and then be able to, a little easier fashion than going through a Plan New Development or a complicated master plan process, be able to parse out areas where this area will be single-family homes and, and commercial along the highway, maybe some multifamily, mixed density, or medium-density kind of uses. So be able to define those areas through the rezoning process in a streamlined fashion, rather than what we are doing today. And then the last one is our Village Development Type. So this would think manufactured home, mobile home park kind of setup, interior streets, defined lots, but maybe not necessarily subdivided lots where that homeowner would own it. So think of red-butt estates, but this would also correspond, correspond with what we're calling cottage villages, or tiny homes. We have introduced the ability to have this kind of development type with smaller, permanent, built-on-foundation homes, so that's in the code. Let's see, moving on, so this is the, the land use table, so different use categories, the subtypes, so this is the retail and service, so you'd have the laundry list of different uses allowed, and then within your zoning districts, P is permitted, a dash is that it's not permitted. Conditional use is our same old conditional use that we have today. The new added feature here would be the L, or limited. So it is generally permitted as long as A hit use limitation. So for instance, a grocery store is permitted in the CC or the Highway Commercial District, but it's limited in other areas. So in Aggieville and downtown, they're allowed, as long as maybe they're, I don't know the specifics, I can't, I don't have them memorized yet, but maybe a grocery store is limited in its square footage, so you don't have a Super Walmart in the middle of downtown, or maybe it doesn't have a drive-through pharmacy, because we, we don't allow drive-through features in those districts. So that is the, the limited use section there. We also have accessory uses, a little new for us, you know, so permitted, but they would be subservient to the other uses within that district. Article Three then is our overlays. We don't have a, a lot in terms of new overlays, just new names. The two new overlays that we do have is Eureka Valley, K-18 overlay district, and the Gateway Corridor, I'll touch on that in a moment. So the, probably the biggest one that most people get interested in is currently our traditional neighborhood overlay would convert to the OEN, Established Neighborhood Overlay, with, that is originally designed to preserve some of these home types. We've kept a lot of those design features in place, but because we have, as the video said, a lot better handle or better technology to look at things, we have recognized that these older neighborhoods, especially down around City Hall, around City Park, the front setbacks near the streets are all over the place, and we defined a 14-foot setback, but if you go up and down the streets, they're everywhere. And so we've been able to use our mapping systems to better define that. Today, under our 14-foot setback requirement, only about 34% of homes in the Established Neighborhood Overlay Districts, or the Traditional Neighborhood Overlay Districts, met that requirement. So we've shrunk it down a little bit more to 12, as well as having some allowances for front porches and those sort of things. So we have better compliance for existing homes, and what that means to me is now a homeowner that wants to live in a walkable neighborhood down here, near some great schools, near Aggieville and downtown, the lifeblood of our communities in some sense, but they want to add a bedroom, or they want to enlarge their front porch, they don't need to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, spend that money, take that time. By shrinking or lowering that threshold, we give those homeowners more flexibility to fix up older homes, to make them livable, and make our community better. We also have established some, some, some design shifts. I mentioned the porches, really just to ensure that new or improved homes maintain that feel, that character that we have in, in our older neighborhoods. And I mentioned the Gateway Corridors, the Eureka Valley Corridors. So this would be out south of town. We have, this is a partnership with Riley County to create these corridors, where Riley County would have initially established them, and as developments occur, our design standards would be implemented in these areas. Same thing out at Eureka Valley on K-18. And so the idea here is minimum design standards for these corridor areas, so that as you're coming into town, you're seeing a vibrant, uh, commercial strip, not something that isn't. And some of those, as you all know, some of those developments that are out there now are not that attractive. And so as they develop, these, these standards would come into place. And then we have the Redevelopment District, which is now our M-FRO. Not a bunch has changed there, really cleaning up some standards and making it more easier to define and user-friendly. So that's all I have. More information can be found at this website. The link to ENCODE, where, again, I would encourage everyone to go to, to look at this development code is, so that you can read through it and input it. The Planning Board reviewed this last night, initially, at their next meeting in two weeks. They will dive deep into Articles One through Three, and we will ask them to give a, a non-binding vote of confidence of sort, so that we know, as we progress, that there are no major issues. So I don't know exactly how that'll work with the commission, but my, what I don't want to happen is, the night of adoption, someone goes, "Hey, I've never liked this thing all through this process," and we've spent a lot of time where we could have addressed things and got to that 11th hour. So we'll work with the city manager's office and the clerk to figure out the best route to do that. And then we will also, as beyond the videos, we are going to be reaching out to stakeholder groups, whoever really power users of sorts to this development code. Beyond that, happy to talk to any committee or group in the community that would like to hear about this, so if you have anybody in mind, please let us know. The last thing we want to do is keep this a secret, kind of be annoying about it, and be out there, and so everyone understands what's going on. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions or comments that you may have.
Thanks, Chad. Questions or comments for Chad?
I'm wondering how much you used your Ordinance Advisory Committee? I talked to someone who has said there weren't many meetings, and so I'm interested. So this is really the city staff and the consultant, this draft, but not so much from the community input?
So early on, we had quite a few meetings, three or four meetings, to hammer out the concepts and, and those sort of things, the higher-level stuff. We really, as staff and the consultant team, spent a lot of time last year, beyond working, dealing with flooding issues and other tasks, to go through the minutia of this. Real technical stuff that, you know, I think the, the folks that don't deal with this often or daily would have been extremely bored. It was more organizing pieces and little word changes here and there. So yeah, we didn't spend a whole lot of time with the Ordinance Advisory Committee last year. We spent a great deal of time with them, in my opinion, the year prior, and at the kickoff of this project, to get the big concepts, hammer those through.
So one of the things, when we did this, was also to see if we could streamline the process for developers and such. I think that would be a great feedback for you to take a portion of this, because you're right, it's a lot of details, and I can look at it, it looks really organized and really well-done, and it's extremely detailed. So if I want to, you know, do something about wireless telecommunications, I know where to go and what to do, but I don't know what it looked like before. So this would be great if you had that kind of feedback from them, mainly because they're the experts who are going to fill out the paperwork, and we wanted to be clear about what we seek as a city, and, and there not to be any surprises, and to make the process as easy as possible, so that it's not taking up too much staff time, and they know where to put their staff time on. Is this meeting those needs?
On that note, we are starting to track our time as we get development applications with the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Board items, so we're tracking how much time. And then we're, we're, we've got some work to do on applications and some of that user input stuff that the developer will give us. I suspect we'll have that, some drafts here in a month or so, and when we have that, we'll, we'll find some willing guinea pigs, so to speak, of developers, consultants, that would be willing to kind of give us a dual application to see just what the ti, you know, is there time savings or not?
I think that's what you need, is some of those projects to have it filter out, to see if it is doing what we want it to do. So we can give you feedback, but I'm, I'm not an expert in these areas. I can only pick part, tiny pieces, bits and pieces, but when you're looking at making regulations, you know, concise and consistent and effective to use by citizens and developers and such, that who I would, that's who I would like for them to take a small piece of this, and let's say they want to build something in a neighborhood, do these regulations for those different types of residential areas we have now, does it make it easier for them? Or did we just do a lot of work, and it's still just as confusing? And that'll give us a lot for the consultant and for, for our staff to also make it easier for that. Because we did want it, like we said, user-friendly, searchable, easy to understand, and they can do it all online without having to get, do any kind of guesswork, and we want to also stop all of the Board of Appeals, you know, we want to stop that process where people are thinking, "Well, the city commission said no, so we're just going to go here instead." So we want to have as few of those as possible.
Agreed.
And if this is doing that, I think that that's the best outcome.
You might mention the comparison chart that John is also putting together.
Yeah, we're also putting that together, takes a little bit of time, so really can't do a track change on this, or, because it's a whole new document, and the words are generally from our current regulations are there in the new regulations, but they're in different order, in different sections. So we're working on a comparison document that you can, that you all and anybody else in the community can say, "All right, today, I know that the, the setback requirements for a duplex is in this section. That same set of requirements would be in this table in this section." So people can have a little easier time of, of finding stuff. And then we'll do some educational things on, on how to, to work the website, because that's really the key, that's the heart of it, is those searchable tools, those calculators, those sort of things. So, yep, we'll work on that for sure.
So hopefully you have groups such as developers, or the Chamber of Commerce, or business sectors, that you are taking it to landlords, whomever it might be, so they can, you know, say, "Here's the website, see if you can navigate this. What do you think? Where do we need to fill out the kinks?" Because I think that's where the education process is going to start, because they're the ones who are going to be utilizing it long after we're gone. Yeah.
In our, well, in the video, I mentioned 1968, most, a lot of the language are 60, 68, 69, so that's roughly 50 some odd years ago. Would you do me a favor and go back to Article Two, Residential District Conversions? Slide, um, one more.
There you go.
So that top is what I, unbeknownst to me, I found reading all of these regulations last night to be extremely interesting.
Good.
And it got me thinking about something, and it's, it's in, it's in relation to this single-family residential and the residential low-density, which is not so much a question to use per se, but more of a comment, and I think since it's been 50 years since the verbiage that we've used, it takes, I think, as a commission, maybe we take a deep breath, and I want you to, to think about this as you go through. I promise it'll only be about five minutes of me giving some comments here, quickly. So I want you to picture in our minds Bill Snyder Family Stadium, and as, now, think about a team running out of the tunnel, and they're holding that rock or the flag that says "family," and at Flint Hills Job Corps, there's a two-ton limestone rock that reads "family," and at Fort Riley and across the Army, we're all family. I know what, the men I deployed with are my brothers for life. So this community is really big on family, and it's interesting to think about the ways we apply that word. In this document, in this UDO, as it, as the PDF is presented, there's over 188, or 180 mentions, give or take a few, of the word "family." And the fa, and the word "family" is defined later on than what was presented here, but is defined on Page 325, "As an individual, or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, or adoption, or under foster care established by governmental action, living together as a single housekeeping unit, or a group of not more than four persons, some of which are not related by blood, marriage, or adoption, living together as a single housekeeping unit. There shall be a rebuttable presumption that five or more people living together as a single housekeeping unit are not a family." So this is essentially saying, five or more unrelated people have the burden of proof that they are a family, will presume they're not a family. This got me thinking. As I, as I started looking deeper, Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall, I don't know how I ended up there, but Thurgood Marshall argued that a very similar definition violated the First Amendment constitutional right of freedom of association. He wrote in that court opinion that the residents of a town were not served by an ordinance such as this that limited the number of unrelated who could live together but permitted an unlimited number of related people to live together. He noted that the numerical occupancy restrictions would be far more effective way to deal with population density and its to deal with population density and its related problems. And here, this is what you're trying to, to get to the low density. We're moving from single-family residential to low density. I, I think as it currently stands, these zoning rules would prevent anyone, for whatever reason, who wishes an arrangement outside of biological or legally related family. This could be five elderly widows, it could be five college students, we all know that's an issue. A, it could be a minister and a family who need to take in a family, it could be five nuns. It could be five childhood best friends or five people on a team together. It could be Commissioner Hattasall trying to make my cost of living more affordable by having me as a roommate and bringing my family in. So I, I think that, my hope is that we will move away from the practice that I think this speaks to a little bit more, that's 50-plus years old. And when we define what a family is, doesn't seem to be the job of a municipality to define a family. And we move towards a more practical way of identifying residential zoning, as you've done on this graph, but it's still in there 180 times in the UDO. And I think that numerical occupancy, that's where we get to. So we, the purpose is to ensure safety, privacy, sanitation, to prevent overcrowding. This is where the city needs to focus. We need to remain focused on that, on the number of residents that are suitable for the size, for those same things, safety, and do this rather than meddling in the biological or marriage relationships of individuals. So I don't think this is easy, but I didn't want to wait till the 11th hour to bring this up. Like you said, I don't, I don't think this is as easy as doing a cut and paste from single-family and putting in single-dwelling or residential. But I do think it's not impossible. And it's something that maybe we, after 52 years, can take a breath and think about, are we defining family? Is that the job of the city? Is there a way to do it that doesn't put us in that, in that predicament? And more focused on the structures. So that is my thoughts on this. I don't know that there's a question there, but...
Did you want to replace the word? I don't, I don't understand.
Well, the way that we, I, I don't know that we needed to find family as we do on page 325. If we can allow people to define family differently, that's, that's one option. I'm not prescribing the solution. There could be single occupancy, single dwelling, there's, there's other, there's functioning family verbiage, there's a lot of different verbiage that exists. So just throwing that out there is something that I'd like to hear more about going forward. We don't define family in such a limited way as four unrelated people. That seems arbitrary. I mean, five unrelated people is not a family, but four is in this community. Why?
So, so we can, so we can research this appropriately. The, the, one of the bigger topics of that discussion is that number of four is a family and anything over that, unless, you know, unless it's a fraternity or, or a group home or something like that, is an illegal situation. And so that is, is that the crux of the topic?
Well, I think that brings in a whole different element of, it's unenforceable. So the, the root of why, why this was created and why the verb "single-family" was brought into the, the, the language in, across the country in the 50s and the, and the verbiage that was used to define that. Is that where we're at? Do we need to do that now? Or are we, are we in the business of defining a family as a municipality? Or is it a single-dwelling residence? Like you have right here, residential low density for zoning purposes?
But that was put in there, I mean, may as well say it. I mean, the idea was, I didn't want, you know, if you're living in a single-family house and what was the R1 neighborhood, now RL, you don't want the house next to you to be rented by five college kids. And that's why it was put in there, it's just that simple. It's, it's to control the rental market. And, and maybe they used "family" to disguise that, but, but really that was the point. And right now, we've got landlords upset about that, because they bought houses, they have five bedrooms. They want to rent all five bedrooms and they can't, because the ordinance won't allow them. And so I see that side of it, but also, I, I wouldn't really like to have my two neighbors all of a sudden rent their houses and have, you know, four, five, six college kids there. With the accompanying cars and everything else that comes with it. And other cities, you know, I think when Clemson came up here, they limited it even worse. They zoned areas, wouldn't allow you to rent. And, you know, that got us into the discussion on these, I don't know what they're called, auxiliary living units, where you build a...
Auxiliary dwellings?
Yeah, dwelling, and, and I think we talked about not, not allowing those. Because then what happens is your RL district actually becomes a two-family district now. If I build one of those and then rent it out above my garage, now there's actually two families there. You know, at least with this four-person rule, yeah, it's four people. And, and that's why it's in there. And I don't have an answer. Because, because I, you know, I really don't have a problem with five people living in a house if it's in the RLA district, which was the R2 or 4, because that was higher density. But, but if it's in a, you know, if it's in the RL district, I still sort of lean towards no, because it's, it's based on the fact that you're protecting the people that, you know, bought those houses in those districts, R1. They expected to have a traditional family next to them. They didn't expect it to really be a rental property with five or six, you know, unrelated people living there. And that's the, that's the real, the real crux to the matter. And sometimes, you know, like, like where I'm at, the HOA prevents it anyway. They got even more stringent requirements that won't allow you to do certain things and sometimes those go overboard. But, but, but if they're not in place, you have a problem. Because it was two years ago on Windsong, one of the residents that, no longer there, they moved because of it, decided to take in six or seven people and have them live there. They're being a good Samaritan. But the, but the Housing Association said, wait a minute, we don't want, you know, seven unrelated people living in this house. We have seven cars down there and people racing up and down our dead-end street. And so the Housing Association said, hey, timeout, you can't do that. So the guy sold the house and moved.
So what happens when we have a six-bedroom house that's theoretically next to you? And it can only have four Rhodes Scholars or Truman Scholars living in it at a time? Because, I mean, they're, they're college kids too, right? But they, only four at a time, so two bedrooms are empty. Why, why does that make any sense?
It may not, I'm just saying, that's, that's the fact. And then people, people didn't want five or six unrelated people living next to them. And that's why it was in the code years ago, and that's why it stayed there. And I mean, we can, we can have that argument. I don't know how most of the population, you know, feels about it. I, I know that those that feel strongly about it just form an HOA and takes care of it. You know, because, because that'll, that goes in addition to the city, city code and they can solve the problem. But, but I also understand the landlords, you know, that got that fifth bedroom and we're talking about affordable housing. And if five kids are sharing the rent, that's better than four. And so, so that, that's the trade-off. So I, I really wouldn't have a problem with saying, fine. For everything that's not in the RL district, you can rent five, six bedrooms. But if it's zoned RL, you can't. Just, just because, you know, we had people that buy homes and that's what their expectation was and I don't want to, I wouldn't want to change that. The other districts, I don't think that expectation was, was ever there, because it was multifamily, lots of people.
On that topic, I'd give a bit of caution and Katie, you may help me out here. I believe Lawrence tried that approach of certain areas around campus at KU. They limited to, they had a different definition of what family is, a lower number, to kind of prevent that overcrowding and that raucous behavior. And I don't think that went over very well. Maybe you have a different recollection or...
The Kansas Supreme Court said that the, the definition of family has to be consistent in all those zones. And that, and there's a long history of why there's a limitation in occupancy that we could provide you at another time. But it relates to a lot of things in terms of the infrastructure in the neighborhood, the width of the streets, the available parking, and a lot of things. It's maybe family just isn't the best, maybe that's, it's that word that is a difficulty for some people, but the, but it's, what it's, the function of that term is to set a presumptive occupants, occupancy level per dwelling unit, regardless of the relationship, so that they can use that number as an average to, for all the infrastructure, parking and everything that supports that district. Of course, there can be exceptions to that, as you, as you can tell in the definition. But that, that is, that's the theory behind some kind of occupancy level. It also sustains the character of the district. Because if you don't have occupancy levels, then theoretically you could have 15 people in a structure or five or six or whatever. And so then the character of the district isn't, the characteristic of the district is as intended as a low-density district. But there's, there's a lot more to it than that, but that's a summary.
So obviously we'll take your direction. If you'd like us to do that research and provide that to you, we would be happy to. But as Katie mentioned, there's some bars that the Kansas Supreme Court has made us, set for us, as well as some justification why our current regulation and that theory of defining what family is has existed. So happy to take your lead on it, but there are some...
Yeah, I'd, I'd definitely love to know more. I mean, if that's a question.
I tend to accept the four unrelated people, because that's kind of a standard across the country. It is, at least, the, the few communities I have checked in with and maybe you have information from others. And I, you know, it's like, when you look at a property, you say, no, that's not going to work because of this factor or that factor. That's how I look at a landlord that would buy a, a structure with five bedrooms at, before they had tried to get it changed or, or, and they are aware and know the city's ordinances with the, the standard being four. The other thing is, I, you know, all you need is one married couple or, you know, you can have five if two of them are related. So there are ways to get there if you're diligent and work it. I wanted to ask about Airbnbs. I, we just keep not pursuing that. And actually, it's kind of like the internet sales tax, it's taking over the world. I think our hotels are being disadvantaged, our cities being disadvantaged, because the Airbnb people don't really, I don't think they pay the transient guest tax, right?
I believe Airbnb, that corporation does through the state of Kansas.
But there are others out there that don't. So I'm interested in consistency and I'm not interested in giving one or multiple organizations a free pass and, and making other unequal enforcement. So I, I, I don't think Airbnb is in here.
Correct. So our strategy for that, and we probably need to circle back around and bring it back before you, was to implement a registration process that had use limitations and other things and fold that into the Code of Ordinance with the rental registration process. We had waited on that from last year or the year before's discussion. Believe there was some anticipation that the rental registration topic would be opened up. So we didn't want to implement Airbnb kind of, or, you know, short-term rental things, because our strategy is to put it in that section of the code and then have rental registrations open up now. If, if my perception is, we're not going to touch rental registration, we can certainly bring that back and have that. But it will not be part of the UDO, but we felt it fit better with the rental registration portion.
My read is that this commission will not go forward with rental inspection.
Okay.
And rental registration, we don't charge for. Airbnb, I want that revenue for this community. And I think that's what I see as this unequal kind of enforcement with regard to the transient guest tax. I'd like to move, and I, short-term rentals have been on our agenda for four years, I know. So I'd like to see it go somewhere. And I think, I think it's a thorny issue, so that's why we haven't, don't take me wrong. But maybe this is the time to do something about it, or at least cause a conversation about why we haven't done it. I would think that other communities have resolved this and, and it's no longer such an unknown as it was at one time. The corridor entrances, I was on the corridor, what was the name of it? Where Riley County and the city, well, there was a joint committee that made recommendations, Gateway Corridor, that was the name of it, to, from all the directions of Manhattan. Mostly, they were looking at 177 into town. But we gradually got around to the other entrances. And the appearance as people arrive in our community and what, how can we make that the best we can? And so I, that, so I'm interested in this and a further kind of examination of what you're after. Because I just didn't get enough substance when I, so I don't know what to do with it yet. And probably, I have to admit, I did not read all 474 pages, Chad.
No, well, that's why we're doing it, like article by article. I don't expect you to sit down and knock this out in a weekend.
So corridors are important to the impression that we give when people arrive. And that has usually always been positive as you come down the hill or... And I think we've really improved K-18 into town. At some point, we'll have to work on widening 177 Northwest. But, so, let's see. Well, anyway, I don't know. Eureka Valley is just part of the corridor. But I know that there can be some, things happen out there too that are good. Okay, that's it for now.
Alright, thank you.
Chad, I was wondering, you moved the PUD to PD. Is it still the same thing or is it completely different?
Pretty, pretty much the same process. Some tweaks, some different changes there, but essentially a two-step process where you would rezone it and have a preliminary development plan. If that, that is approved, then they would bring back a final development plan to the planning board before they can get a building permit. That two-step process would include not only the written documents about what they want to rezone it for and those things, but also the site plan, elevation plan, landscaping signage. It's fairly intensive to get to the building permit phase through the zoning. And all those steps are there because they're good steps. The way we envision it through the UDO is the PD would really be reserved for those rare, unique, easily undefinable developments. That we still need to have that flexibility for customized zoning district for that site and the, and the review process of what the site will look like, the buildings will look like, those sort of things. But by and large, our effort through this with the different regulations, the design standards, those sort of things, is to codify those standards, the things that we were after through the PUD process and just make it known, put it on black and white, so that a developer could come in and say, I want to do a mixed-use development. These are my rules, I've, I would follow them no matter what and can go get the building permit. Whereas today, if I want to combine an apartment with, you know, businesses outside of Aggieville downtown and along North Manhattan, I have to do a PUD, because we don't have such a beast today.
Chad, you might mention the mixed-use district.
Yeah, and, and that, combining those uses would be in the, a new mixed-use district that we, we don't have today, but we have implemented through this. So combining residential with commercial in some fashion, or commercial with industrial. Wouldn't combine industrial with residential. And so there's standards of how we would mix that, both horizontally across the site and vertically within the building.
I think it'd be good if you gave a group of developers or whoever does blueprints or works on these types of things, a scenario. Like say, okay, you want a hospital and you want this, this, and this. Go there, go to our website and see how, if it makes it easier or something like that.
We tried that early on, we asked them, here's what we're thinking, would you be willing? And we didn't have a whole lot of takers.
Because it takes time.
It takes time.
They have better stuff to do.
We were hoping early on, we would have some developers and consultants go, yeah, happy to try to shake that out. We didn't have anybody grab on to that.
Maybe from, from the university. Because those are the students that are going to come out and try to navigate the process and see if it works for them. And that could be a, a project of some kind. I had a question about this. Go ahead, Linda.
I just had a question. Do you, does, and I didn't see anything in here. Do you envision the planning board continuing in its current role?
Yeah.
And the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Yes. Yes.
So, what will fall off of their agenda by virtue of this plan?
Nothing by and large.
Nothing, okay.
Our hope, Mayor Eddy mentioned it, that the, with our changes to setbacks and other use limitations, that applications to the Board of Zoning Appeals would be less, just because we have, Samantha Easterbrook did her master's thesis on taking decades of City of Manhattan Border Zoning Appeals applications, and putting them into a database, and she's been able to help us spell out, you know, how many setbacks for fences we had versus homes, and those kind of things. And so, we've been able to, and with our GIS, to be able to say, all right, we don't need a 25-foot setback, 20 is probably more appropriate for what people really want, or 12, or 8, or whatever it is. So, we've been able to, our hope is, we're going to lessen that, those application loads to the Board of Zoning Appeals. But the rest of the process.
So, we're just reducing things so that now those people don't have to come in and get an exception, or?
I mean, the.
Well, in the analysis that both Samantha and Ben did, we've designed the regulations, particularly in the older neighborhoods that were built before zoning, which is why they're closer to the sidewalk. That's where the vast majority of the BZA cases were. We've modified the regulations to reflect that original character. Yes, it's reduced some setbacks. It should reduce the vast majority of BZA cases. Let me also mention your question about, the planning board and BZA's function is statutory. Our regulations can't change their statutory obligation. So, the planning board still will hear all rezoning cases, they'll, by statute, they approve subdivision plaids. The Board of Zoning Appeals, by statute and by our local code, review very specific applications, and they're the deciders of those. If, if their action is appealed, it goes to District Court. Your role remains the same statutorily, so none of that changes. This document has been designed to really reflect what the conference of plan that was adopted in 2015, and visions for the community, and to update the implementation regulations, the subdivision regs, and the zoning, to better implement what the community adopted in 2015, is our 2030-year vision.
I've just seen some of the BZA proposals that have been wanting five exceptions. They wanted to build within two foot of the backlot line, two foot of the alley, tie a three, maybe, and extend, clear out in the front. And it just seems like you're, the city is being pushed further and further to make these exceptions, and I'm not so sure they really benefit our community, they're, because they're in excess. But anyway, as I go look at them, and, yeah, thank you, I don't.
Will this take, get rid of spot zoning?
Our thresholds for, for rezoning a property do not change, I don't think. I'll have to look into that. But right now, you either have to have 100 feet of frontage, 10,000 square feet of property, or be immediately adjacent to what you want to rezone to, and that, I'm pretty sure does not change. We do have some.
That's correct. The other thing to remember, though, is zoning still needs to conform with the comprehensive plan. Even a PUD needs to conform with a comprehensive plan. It isn't a mulligan to go do whatever you want. The comprehensive plan is still the guide for the mix of land uses, so.
We have put in some higher thresholds to rezone to some certain districts. So, it'll take me forever to find it, but we've, we've increased that threshold for, like, industrial, so you couldn't just, you know, a 10,000 square foot, like we saw a few weeks ago.
That's what I'm thinking, because we saw.
That threshold would be in the acres, and not square footage.
I think during my tenure here, I saw at least, maybe two or three times, when there was spot zoning requested. So, I don't want us to waste our time, or their time, if we're going to say no anyway. So, I just wanted to be clear about that process, and make sure it's taken care of at the front end, so, like I said, nobody's wasting their time. When, in the early phases of the UDO, when we were talking to the consultants, they said, one of the major issues they see in most communities, and ours included, is that for a business or an area, we tend to have too much parking. Did they reduce all of that parking?
Yeah, we'll cover that in, in future articles. But yeah, we have lowered that threshold, that, that minimum, we've lowered it. We haven't eliminated parking, except for downtown in Aggieville. Those have never had, basically never have had parking requirements.
Right.
And then we also put a cap, a fairly high ceiling. The example I often think about is Home Depot. Love having Home Depot in our community. I go there when I have to do a home project, two or three times, when I do a home project, so I'm glad they're there. But I don't know, I've ever seen that parking lot even remotely full. And that is, their decis, that was their decision, but it also, that decision encroached in the Wildcat Creek floodplain. It has more runoff, impervious surface, it does some other things. And also, having that, more parking has less of a financial impact for the community and tax revenue. A parking lot is less beneficial to our bottom line than a building. And so, we're trying to help, help businesses and developers, you know, they don't need to have that much parking. I don't know what parking.
And they don't want to, because that, they have to pay for that.
Right, right, right.
So, I think that's one of the new things, as we move forward with this, to educate our, our community about what they, what is required, and it's a little bit less than what we used to have, because there are a lot of pockets in our community, as is others in other communities, where the parking lot really looks empty, except for maybe those two or three days a year.
Sure.
So, that's something we don't want wasted space into. So, that was one of the things this was going to do.
And there's still a lot of opportunity for those businesses to have what they need.
Right, to be successful and have parking spaces.
See, there are, there are a lot of folks concerned about reducing that parking, because they think it's going to cause, you know, congestion, especially in some high-density areas, so I'm not sure how I feel about that. I do know that, I think it's not business-friendly to put a maximum. You know, if I own Home Depot, and I want to build it, and I stay within the code regulations, and I don't screw up Wildcat Creek, you know, I'm the guy investing the money. If I want to put 500 parking lots out there, why can't I? You know, you may think I only need 300, but I want to put five. And maybe the reason is, I want to stack trees and things out there like they do half of the year. But I think that's just not business-friendly for us to put a max on there. I think a minimum, okay, you know, I can see that. But the maximum, if I own it, and I don't violate anything else, you know, then, then I have at it, and you're going to charge me, you know, what, equivalent runoff units anyway, for, for the water, so it's going to cost me more money, and I know that. And, and I think that, I like this code process, because I see, when that website is fully up there, I, I can probably make a pretty damn good informed decision, just by reading what's on our website.
Yeah.
It shouldn't have to go to Board of Zoning Appeals, because I goofed something up, or, or anything else. So, I think, I think we're headed in the right direction, but we're going to, we're going to have some little issues on, on some of these things, but that's what the discussion's about.
You betcha. I appreciate the comment.
I'd like for you to open up the next time, or whenever we talk again, about the government-owned or institutional land.
Sure.
What, what it means when no govern, and I don't, I don't think there are standards in here for that. It's just whatever you want to do. So, anyway, I, I, I would like more, better definition and another discussion about it, because we really haven't touched on it tonight, and I don't intend to. I wanted to ask about tiny, about the cottage villages, or cottage houses. It says each dwelling unit, and they have to be in a village, each dwelling unit may be no larger than 600 square feet. And houses with a floor plan of less than 400 may take advantage of the tiny houses found in Appendix Q of the International Residential Code. I don't know what that is, I'm just, so I fall off into an unknown land, no matter which direction I go.
Yep.
And then, it talks, so there's a, it'd be a cottage house, and a cottage village, are those the two terms you're proposing?
Um.
I don't, I mean.
So, today.
Yeah.
If you want to build a stick-built home on a permanent foundation, I believe it's over 400 square, well, there's some minimum room sizes.
Yeah.
You could do that on any lot, although it's probably cost-prohibitive to buy a $30,000 lot, but a, you know, an $80,000, 400 square foot home. And so, we have implemented the cottage village, so it would look very much like a manufactured home park, but permanently designed, or permanently built on, stick-built on foundations.
And not on the metal structure.
Correct. It would be on a foundation.
Okay, steel.
The, the building code, our building code does not recognize RVs as permanent living spaces. So, the traditional, you know, when you go look at.
So, that's what you consider the current tiny house models are?
Yeah, when you look at those TV shows where they have convert, you know.
Round town.
Trailers and, and those sort of things. Our building code does not consider those permanent living. The, the appendix that you referenced in the, with the building code, allows for different building features that a normal house wouldn't allow. You, smaller headspace in an attic for, where most people sleep in those type of homes, a ladder to get up to that attic space that normally wouldn't be allowed in most homes. And so, that's what that appendix does. But they, the, they don't recognize anything smaller than 400 square feet to use those features. So, that's the, that is the, the bottom end of those cottages. We put 600 square feet as the upper end, so that we can still get the density envisioned for these villages, these cottage villages, and be able to have that density that, that we feel is important for those sort of development types.
Well, I doubt if there ever, a demand for 500 of them, but, in a village, but I had hoped that we might sometime try it on a.
We've actually talked to several, several, a couple of developers, local developers that would like to try this out. So, I think there's a need there.
It might be the solution for some of the really low and homeless people, too. I mean, it seems like something we need to try to find a location. And I wondered, I know that, in my observation, there have no, been no mobile home parks in the city of, established in the City of Manhattan for years. They are all the old ones that are. So, here is a provision for factory-built housing. Do you expect factory-built housing? Now, they are not mobile homes. They are on a foundation, like you're talking about. Is that something that across, I, I don't, I was wondering about the trend. Is that something that, that we see coming, or are we just making allowance for it?
It's always been there. The state statute requires us to have.
Okay.
As long as a home, a manufactured home meets the state statute design requirements, which ours model, or mimics.
Does.
We have to allow those in every, every residential zone.
But we don't have to allow mobile home courts?
That is correct.
Okay, really?
Well, we.
I didn't know that. That's what I wondered.
We have, either in the, our manufactured home park, we today have a very, never-used, I think there's one property zoned R4 general residential district, that would allow a manufactured home, a mobile home, on a residential lot.
On a foundation?
On, well, no, it'd be on a, on a footing.
Uh-huh, okay. On a.
Peer system.
Steel beam, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, I just was, I wondered.
Just to clarify on that regard, the, so, a manufactured home, that's a prefabricated home, that, that you can build in any of our district, is a much higher standard than a mobile home in a mobile home park.
I agree, yeah.
There's, there's a huge difference in those two.
Right, so, to clarify that, we, there's three permanent house types. You have your stick-built, built to our residential building code. You have the manufactured home, which is essentially a home built in a factory to our residential code. Our code official actually goes to those manufacturing sites, make sure that they are building them to our code. They put them on a trailer, bring them here, slide them off a trailer, put it on a foundation.
Right.
And then you have what's commonly the mobile home. It is actually a HUD-certified manufactured home. So, those are the varying types of permanent housing. And a HUD-certified, or HUD-placarded manufactured home can only go in these.
In the courts. But the manufactured homes, you say there's only really one in town?
Well, so.
So, we really don't have many.
No, no. The manufactured home that is built to our building code in a factory, so Wardcraft.
Yeah.
Is a common brand name. Wardcraft can be put in any single family, or any residential district in the community, as long as it meets.
The square foot.
Those design standards set by the state.
By the homeowners, or whatever, yeah.
The HUD-placarded mobile home, or manufactured home, but the HUD-placarded home can only go in the manufactured home parks, which today's R4, in the future, it'll be the village development type.
Okay.
Or, today, it's called R4 general residential. We only have one property zone that. That is going away. We will not have that function in the future.
So, when people talk of these tiny homes, that's considered a manufactured home, just smaller size?
Correct. Either stick-built onsite, or manufactured home, if they were to be built that way.
And, and I'm glad to see that, you know, that, or at least we're experimenting with that, whether a developer jumps in, but, you know, we've talked a lot about affordable housing, and, and people talked about style, and this is one, we just haven't tried. So, I think it's, it's worth a shot, especially if some developers are interested in trying it.
So, I just have one last question also. I don't know if there were more, but for the telecommunications structures, if, that's an ongoing conversation at, at the state and federal levels, with so many, so many conversations about telecommunications, if they put something into place in their statute, or into the state policies, that would nullify what we have, right? As far as any type of.
It depends.
I don't know, they're going in so many directions sometimes.
You're right. It depends. What we have drafted conforms to the latest that, that I'm aware of, that has been approved at the federal or state level for telecommunications on private property. Last year, we did a big push with those small cell telecommunications things on public property, public right-of-way. That wouldn't be in this section. So, there may be in the future, a federal regulation or a state regulation that changes something and forces us to amend these, but I have no idea what those will be, and we'll cross that bridge if we have to. But, to my knowledge, these are the most up-to-date and applicable, based on everyone else's regulations.
And, and most of what you're hearing about, the 5G rollout, that's the small cell in the city right-of-way, and that's mandated, we can't really do anything about it.
That's what I'm saying, like, there are some things we have control over.
Right, but the big, tall, 150-foot cell towers that are typically on private property, we do regulate. There are some federal, follow, sorry, primarily doing, related to how long we can take to review them, which is very short. But we can do zoning regulations for those big ones that are not on city right-of-way.
So, like what they did in Wichita, when they had the small towers and these large towers, those are in their neighborhoods?
So, I think those were really larger just power poles, that they were utilizing for some of their communications equipment, too. What, what we're talking about is the big cell towers, that are like up at the research park, and out by the Seacoat Tank.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Uh, well, I don't, I, I noticed the standards for floodplain development I'm talking about. Is it a time, I don't know how many years ago, we raised the, the level, the floodplain level for development, to build a residence on?
Right.
Or infill?
A residence, to build a house on. We had, I mean, you have to have a certain height.
Sure.
Elevation. And we have had flooding since then, and the flood maps have been adjusted again, five years ago, or six. So, if we were, if we could muster the consensus to raise the floodplain minimum again, we would be moving more people out of harm's way, and there's not much anything we can do about existing, but we could, with regard to future development, right? And this is the. development, right? And this is the right place to do that?
It would be. Would need to, I mean, and when we get to that section, I can elaborate on it. But we have, I would say, the highest, other than one tiny little town in northeast, extreme northeast Kansas that is right next to the Missouri River, which I think has a 10-foot freeboard. I can't remember the town's name. We'd have to find it for you. But 10-foot freeboard is a bunch. But I would imagine they haven't had a whole lot of building for decades there. To my knowledge, we have the highest set of floodplain regulations in the state. Can we make them higher? You bet.
I'd just like to have that, have you have a conversation with us about that in the future. So, because I know you're not prepared tonight, and none of us are, but I do think that it would be worth a conversation at some point.
Yeah, but we changed our, our rules on, you know, building in that a few years ago, as I recall. I think the last building was Petco that was allowed to shovel dirt into the floodplain. And we changed it so that if you put any in, you got to take same amount out. And, you know, I think I use the term draconian regulations, and I agree. If you want to stop flooding, you've got to have draconian regulations when it comes to building in the floodplain or future floodplain. And, and we headed in that direction, as you, as you just pointed out. We're, we're probably top of the list on that now.
Yep.
The only thing I've, I don't feel all that strongly about a lot of this, and that the zoning stuff, other than the fact that, yeah, I don't want us to make it harder, and I don't want to make it more onerous and more tighter regulations and stuff like this. And so if, if the point of all this is going to be ease of use and simplifying, I'm all in favor of it. So that's my big thing, is it's not make it harder. It drags out the process longer, it makes it more expensive. So if any of that, any of this stuff will stop that, I'm all on board.
Yeah. That was been our, our effort through the whole thing. I will point out, the next article that we'll look at, the development and design standards, we have proposed minimum bars of building designs for multifamily and commercial and industrial. We felt strongly that some minimum bar should be established to keep our community character. You know, I, I don't think you have to travel too far anywhere to see new development that goes, boy, that's not great-looking development. And thankfully, we haven't seen a whole lot of that in Manhattan, and, and those minimum bars are to make sure we don't. But the whole intent is not to make it, we don't have marble inlays or gold, you know, fixtures of any sort requirements. There are minimum bar that, that should be fairly easy to, to meet because that is what our current developments are reaching to and exceeding. So you'll see that next time, and, and, but I pointed it out, hopefully you don't become alarmed that we got all sorts of stuff in there, so.
Yeah. And I think this does exactly what it's supposed to be doing. We're revisiting some of our codes, but also trying to make it easier to navigate. And when the whole process is done, certainly the, the users will tell us.
Right. And we'll, we'll be starting to meet with those stakeholders in April is the plan. And we, we'll have some public open houses and, and like I said, these videos, these slideshows we are going to produce into videos, just like you saw, so that, you know, not everyone likes to get to a meeting or can find time to get to a meeting, but hopefully everyone can find time to watch a three or four-minute video to understand the, the concepts, and if they feel inspired, can dig deeper into it. So we'll be working on that.
Yeah. I know it takes a lot of work, and I understand how long it's taken us to get here, and we're still not done. But you have to go through so many things at the same time. So I do appreciate it, and certainly educating the rest of the population is going to take some time. But I feel good being here, knowing where we started, and to have this discussion. Otherwise, if I was fresh, I, I would not know what we were talking about at all. But, I mean, it's, it's clear that it takes a lot more experience and knowledge. And thank you all for working on this.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to say? Oh, I didn't, I don't have.
How much time?
Okay, how much time?
Let's go into.
Okay. We need, we will be going into executive session. Go ahead.
I have to make a motion. I'll make a motion. We recess into executive session to discuss legal strategy on contract negotiations pursuant to KSA 754319B2, the exception for consultation with a city attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in an attorney-client relationship, and to resume the open meeting at 10:00 PM in the city commission room.
Second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estabrook?
Yes.
Mayor Ready?
Yes.
Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Motion carries five zero.
That's the end of our meeting. Uh, how do we...
There's, there's a statement.
Okay. After returning from executive session, if not, no binding action was taken during executive session, therefore no vote, and open meeting is needed. Uh, with that, uh, we are adjourned.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Well, seeing it put together, sort of, put it all on it.
Yeah, I'm glad it rang. I'm glad the alarm was off for it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
'Cause that was a part I didn't remember.
Yeah.